The chair resumes the meeting at 9:55. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, before anything, I just want to say, please forgive the tardiness. As you all well know, there are a lot of issues that we are discussing. Mr. Donnelly, please recall the rule for attendance.
Mary Adams.
Present.
Normani Canaccio.
Yes.
John deGraeze.
Yes.
Arnold Drucker.
Here.
Jorge Garin.
Here.
Marouk Amin.
Present.
I am here. Oh, hey, hey.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, we have four.
Chair. I make a motion to consider a resolution authorizing response to the chancellor's letters by email dated May 7, 2013, and May 14, 2013.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor say aye. Any objections? Any votes, say nay. John?
Yes. Be resolved that the board trustees respond to the chancellor's emails from May 7, 2013, and May 4, 2013, considering the presidential search committee.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
I make the motion.
I have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Please raise your hands for account. All against? Nay. Mary. This is the first one to respond to the email.
Oh.
Let's call that again. All in favor of responding to the emails for the chancellor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Mary, are you raising your hand?
Yes.
Mary.
Sound off?
No.
You're not voting for it? Okay. That's fine. All those who are voting against it, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay. All who abstain? Chair.
That's five to three, right?
Five to three. Chair, I make the motion to consider a resolution suspending the presidential search as pursuant to the email communication of the chancellor of the SUNY system dated May 14, 2013.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any objections? Motion?
I don't think it's a motion.
Yeah, it's a motion. That's eight to zero.
Be it resolved that the board of trustees suspend the presidential search pursuant to the email communication of the chancellor of the SUNY system dated May 14, 2013.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All against?
No.
That is three to five. We move on to the board of the acting president.
You're the board.
All right, we are good. We're going to go to the speakers list. I will ask that all speakers please be respectful. I will ask that Kimberly, the members of the audience, I will ask that we all be respectful because this time we are here to listen. I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Good time. How's that?
No.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, the audience, what I would love for this to be is in a spirit of collegiality and respect for one another. That is the spirit because we are here for one purpose. We are all here for the good of the 24,000 students that we represent. We are here to make sure that the process in the selection of the next president of this college proceeds in an orderly and expeditious manner, and we will see how that process will proceed as we go forward. So, we will keep everyone to their three minutes. Mr. Donnelly will inform you that we have 30 seconds left, and I will go to the speakers' list at this time. First speaker is Kimberly Reiser.
Before, I'm sorry, but before Kimberly speaks, I'd just like to congratulate her on that excellent job that you performed as chair of the academic senate. I thank you, and the members of the board, thank you, and for all you did with trying to provide their shape. So, Kimberly, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would like to request Kathy Fagin's time. She is here. I'd like six minutes, please.
Kathy Fagin, do you really appreciate your time?
I do.
Okay. Mr. Donnelly, please get out of this. Reiser, six minutes.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Reiser. I am a professor of biology and have been a proud member of your faculty for 24 years. I represent the academic senate on the presidential search committee. Tonight, I would like to attest to the integrity of the search process. Although Chancellor Zimper asked for an investigation on May 7 because of allegations made by members of this campus community, she chose to not wait for the results. By doing so, with one hasty email, with one broad stroke, the chancellor has painted the committee members and the search process as tainted. People at the college and community have charged the committee members, myself included, with bias and racism. I take these charges very seriously. Because my discipline is evidence-based, I received my PhD from NYU Medical School. I would like to provide facts that counter the assumptions made by the chancellor in her letter dated May 7. The search committee is in the process of writing a letter to the chancellor in which we will elaborate on these points and provide further evidence and full documentation. Chancellor's allegation number one, the search process was not thoroughly reviewed by the search committee, not true. The process was thoroughly reviewed by the committee. We have documents to demonstrate this fact. Allegation two, there was a failure to accommodate the schedule of the student representative of the search committee. As a result, there was no student participation in the process, not true. There was most certainly student participation in the process. Both the student trustee and the SGA president participated in the process. There were 10 people to interview and 14 members of the search committee. That is, there were 24 people's schedules to consider and coordinate. As per our standing operating procedure at the college, out of fairness to the candidates, a member of a search committee who does not attend an interview can still have voice and participate in discussion of the candidates but cannot vote. The SGA president did not attend any of the interviews or any of the vetting sessions. The student trustee attended all. Furthermore, the committee absolutely did not create a schedule to prevent the SGA president from attending. We have the documents. We have the evidence. Allegation three, more than one search committee member deviated from the agreed-upon questionnaire and interjected personal questions in the interviews with candidates, not true. Each of the candidates was asked the same questions by the same person. There were follow-up questions depending on information gleaned from the media, files the firm provided, the candidate's applications, or answers provided by the candidates. We have the documents. We have the evidence. Allegation number four, the committee was reluctant at times to thoroughly discuss the merits of the candidates, not true. We discussed the merits of the candidates. They were thoroughly vetted. We have the evidence. Allegation five, the interview with Acting President Saunders was conducted in an acrostic and totally unprofessional manner, with the questions asked deviating significantly from those asked of our other candidates, not true. Each of the candidates was asked the same questions by the same person. There were follow-up questions depending on information gleaned from the media files the firm provided, the candidate's applications or answers provided by the candidates. We have the evidence. Members of the board, I concur with Laura Curran's statements in her letter to the editor in Newsday. Ms. Curran was a community representative on the search committee. I quote, and I'm speaking for myself and agreeing with Ms. Curran, "At no time did I," Kimberly Reiser, "feel pressure, political or otherwise, to favor certain candidates, nor did I witness any agenda other than selecting the most qualified candidates for the Nassau Community College Board of Trustees evaluation. Based on my firsthand experience, I believe each member of the committee, including elected officials from both parties, took this responsibility seriously and made neutral fact-based decisions about which candidates were best equipped to lead." I close by asking you, our appointed trustees, to allow the search process to proceed. Honor the recommendations of the search committee. Follow protocol. Bring the candidates to campus. Interview them. Hold town meetings for all constituents, and carefully consider the recommendations of the constituents. Then make your fact-based, then make your fact-based decision. If you don't believe that any candidate is equipped to lead the college, then reopen the search. In closing, I urge that you meet your responsibilities as articulated in the New York State Community College Regulations. Please do not succumb to undue interference in the college's operations. Interference that threatens community college autonomy and campus governance. Thank you.
I'm Dr. Karen Simonoff. I'm a history professor. I'm also the secretary for the Ancestry Act and faculty union. You know, Dr. Reiser pretty much stated, presented her evidence, and I don't think there's much for me to add in that sense. I think instead, what I want to address to you is that there's, the college has a heart and soul, which I think right now is definitely in jeopardy. And I'm disturbed that you all have voted not to pursue where the evidence leads, not to draw a conclusion, not to, in essence, challenge the chancellor with her conclusions. By letting the chancellor's conclusions stand, you basically tarnish the reputation of the people who've served on the search committee. You know, when people accused the search committee of, as we heard last week, lynching, of doing very, very, what I consider extraordinarily heinous actions, this is not just some abstract search committee. These are people who are on the search committee. These are individuals who have reputations and lives and families and who are part of our community. And to sit and not to look into this, to allow this sort of stain on people, is firmly very reprehensible, and it's a real shame. In addition, there were people from outside our community, our immediate community, that volunteered to serve on that search committee. I don't know them. I can't give any opinion about them because I just don't know them. I couldn't tell you whether they're good people, bad people, smart. I just don't know them. And for anybody who doesn't know an individual, to accuse people without any shred of evidence of being figurative, being prejudiced, of committing acts that are not things that any of us should do in an academic setting, is again, how can you let that stand? Who ever want to volunteer to do anything again, to serve this community college? How can we treat members of our community, and I mean our community, outside this college campus with such reckless disregard? Who in the world would want to help us again?
Thirty seconds.
And I think that this board oted both to the people who volunteered and to the people within our community who served, to challenge what the chancellor said, or at least finish your investigation and draw your own conclusions and to submit them to the chancellor. Thank you.
I just want you to know, I just want you to know, the search committee will be answering the, will be answering, the search committee will be answering the allegations, and several trustees who are not members of the search committee, as well as trustees who are on the search committee, will also be sending answers up to the chancellor. Unfortunately, it's not a majority of this board. It almost is a majority of the board. Five trustees will be doing that. And we're sure that once these faculty letters that I've seen, I've seen some of them, reach the chancellor's office and her assistants and her advisors, they'll take off whatever pair of glasses she's wearing and put on a pair of glasses that will let her understand that what she understands to have happened here through rank rumor have never occurred. And that in fact, everyone here acted professionally, properly, and reached the result that they were charged to reach, Chris. Just want you to know.
Okay. I wish the whole board would agree with that because what harm does it do to hear all the evidence? What harm does it do to reach your own conclusions and investigate? I don't, I don't understand that. It's like starting a trial and then say, oh, I'm sorry, I heard enough. I'm not going to let you push. What harm does that do? Okay, thank you.
Do you, Kenny?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to start by building off of something that Karen Simonoff just said about accusations without threads of evidence. I'm not talking about the same thing, but the board of trustees received an email on Tuesday, and it was forwarded to the presidential search committee this morning. This email infers that I've accepted bribery in the form of recommendation letters for my vote on the presidential search. I'm insulted that anyone would doubt the work that I've put in to my education as well as this institution. I've acted as the representative of the student body for the last year, and I have followed my constitution as well as my bylaws. Today also, I ask the board to protect our students from future intimidation from our faculty members. To the faculty that have questioned my choosing to attend my four-credit course during the interviews, this decision I made on behalf of my education. If I had skipped this, I had already missed my absences for the semester, and I'm expecting to be treated as a student. I'm not asking for privileges to get out of class. I'm asking to learn with the rest of my classmates. I'm asking to be treated as a student because that's what I am here, not a lawyer. I'm not a professor. I am a student. I chose to be a student during that process, and having attended those classes, I was forced to miss over 50% of the interviews. We should not be expected to skip class as faculty should not have been encouraged to find substitutes three weeks before finals. The only difference is, they can get substitute professors. I cannot have people take my exams for me. Members of our community, I urge you to work together rather than encouraging battle. I am in support of the SUNY system. I am in support of the chancellor, and I am in support of this institution. I have witnessed harassment against myself, and I do not want to see this continue because this is not how an institution is supposed to be run. Our faculty members went to college for a goal to work towards helping us achieve our Okay, so most importantly, and my final point will be, that I am in support of our students. Remember why you are all here. We, the students, are also entitled to our independent voices. Thank you.
You've done a fabulous job here at Nassau Community College. You have worked as a student body president. You have done it with honor and integrity under very, very challenging conditions, and this should not be your last memory of Nassau Community College that leaves a bittersweet. You have the full backing of the board knowing that you have always been a good student, a good student leader, and will make an excellent candidate for this college to go. I am very proud of what you have done here, and I wish you all three, that's one of the compliments.
I wanted to start by saying that I supported, I'm sorry, Ms. Logan, Kenny, what you have to say. I understand it's very difficult to come and talk, and I'd be very intimidating from someone who has a background in being globally, it's very difficult to overcome that, so I just wanted to give her a round of applause. I wanted to start by saying that as president of the SGA, going forward, I hope that we can have transparency with the search reading and everything that way. We took a survey when the social media started, when it was open, we started. Logan came up with it, myself, and all the SGA members. We asked students to rank in order of what you thought the qualifications, what qualifications you envision for our next Nassau Community College president. We asked them to rank whether you wanted education, experience in education, the highest degree in their field, business experience dealing with a very diverse group of student population, and the ability to prioritize. Number one was education experience. Two was experience working with students. And three was highest degree in the field, and then business experience and the ability to prioritize. Kenny and I mixed there. Basically, what I'm here to say is that I just want to make sure that anyone that we choose to represent this fine institution can meet these qualifications for their students. This is what the students have wanted. This is what they were looking for, and someone to help foster their education here. I also wanted to make sure that everyone understood that students trying to serve the student body shouldn't have to feel intimidated or pressured by faculty members. Logan, as she said, she received an email, and I received verbal comments about what I said last time at the board as well. I am not someone that's going to be intimidated. You don't have to like me, but I will give the respect that I deserve as student body president. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to cede my time to whichever speaker may request an additional three minutes. Any takers?
I would like to commend Chancellor's effort for her courage to abort the search and to ask the board to conduct a new search with complete fairness and transparency. It is also encouraging to ask the board to take this next search to be more fair by assigning a legal counsel to oversee the search, that this process will definitely benefit all of the future candidates. We must not belabor the allegations mentioned in this room tonight. A representative from SUNY, namely Lee Radel, was in that room when the search was convened, and her facts obviously differ from what you have heard here tonight from both faculty members and members of our board. Let us move on in fairness, that each candidate can interview in fairness and not in the corruption that we know that has encircled this whole search. Thank you.
Gerald Windsor, pass. Mr. Ed Boyden.
My name's Ed Boyden. I'm in the history department, and I'm also now for two days the chair of the academic senate, Kimberly Reiser's successor. And I want to, thank you. I also want to thank Kimberly for her leadership and work and express the hope that I can do as good a job as she did. We'll see. One point I would like to raise is this. If you talk to my students, they'll tell you I'm not the most organized person in the world, and I'm kind of a space cadet. So, I'm not sure I understand all of the issues that we've been arguing about fully, but as I understand it, Dr. Saunders's position was is that his interview was different than the other candidates' interviews, that he was treated more aggressively, more harshly than the other candidates. How does he know? I assume he wasn't present at the interviews. I would expect that would be the case. And if he wasn't present at the interviews, there's only one way for him to know how the other candidates' interviews took place, which means somebody shared with him information from those interviews. So, as long as we're, I'm not looking at Mr. Pramashia. As long as we are now investigating apparently everything, that possibly is something that might be looked into. If Dr. Saunders stands by his assertion, how does he know what happened in the other candidates' interviews? Thank you.
Um, thank you.
I'm sorry?
Pass.
Esther Bogan.
I'm not as tall. Good evening. I'm Esther Bogan, known to most of you as someone who served as vice chair, former vice chair of the academic senate. If you could congratulate me on being a former.
Congratulations.
And I have served and worked closely with Dr. Kimberly Reiser and Professor Debbie Fisanto and Professor Lynn Mizola. Now, my three colleagues have spent close to 75 years of dedicated service to this college, and I know one thing for sure. If they say the progress had, the process had integrity, then it did. Now, we need to listen very closely to them and what they do know, and really work hard to separate the many issues facing us. If Chancellor Zimper were in this room, I would really ask her one particular question in terms of why the quick turnaround in the request of this board of trustees. We will never know why she withdrew her charge to have a fair investigation into the allegations associated with the search process, will we? We will never know if allegations that were made by the student and by faculty and by members of the committee that we are hearing. members of the committee that we are hearing now in terms of student representation, we will never know what that was based on, will we? We will never know if every group that represents diverse sectors of this college would have ever made the same or different recommendations of semifinalists based on presented qualifications, will we? We will never know if our affirmative action officer did his job, or Lee Radel, as we're talking, did their jobs with respect to the search committees in meeting their responsibilities, will we? We will never know if allegations that the search process was unfair, if those allegations are accurate or not, will we? And we will never know how all, not just one, but how all of the ten presidential competitors view their interview experiences, will we? And that list of "we will never know" will continue to go on and on. What I do know is this, and that is, if my colleagues, Kimberly Reiser, and Deborah DeSanto, and Lynn Mizola say the search process was completed with integrity, then it was. And everyone who has worked with these three faculty members, who has received help and advice from these three faculty members, should also know. Now, trustees, I implore you to respond to the chancellor's decision that puts our college in a hostage situation. And I hope you will issue a statement of cooperation to avoid the appearance of insubordination. And yet also issue a statement protesting the level of intrusion on our integrity and credibility as a self-governing body. And I hope that statement will also protest the accusatory nature of chancellor's actions, that our colleagues, search committee members, and our search process are guilty of any allegation without fair and equal opportunities to be heard. And if you do that, you're already starting to put our Humpty Dumpty back together again. Thank you.
Michael Stewart.
Stoyer.
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 Some people debate how to pronounce your name, too. It is Gordon, right?
Gordon, just like a rose garden.
Okay, that's right. Everybody got this straight now? Professor, um, Dan Petronella has three minutes, which he's yielding to me. That's okay with you.
I'm sorry?
Professor Petronella.
Petronella, absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Donnelly, could you record? Six minutes for Michael.
Thank you. I'm Michael Stoyer. After having served NASA Community Col, Professor, emeritus Stoyer, I should say. After having served NASA Community College for all of my adult life, with many years in the position of a faculty leader at NCC, as well as at SUNY, I retired this past December. Because of my leadership position, I served on many administrative search committees, including those deans, vice presidents, the president, and even the chancellor of SUNY. Thus, I believe that I address you from many years of experience. For the current presidential search, questions were raised about the membership of the search committee and the interview process itself. Some people questioned the list of finalists, and some people expressed disappointment that a candidate that may have favored did not make the list. But these objections do not deny the integrity of the process. I find it truly astonishing that after ordering an investigation, SUNY Chancellor Nancy Zimper acted without getting the results, apparently responding to pressures rather than proven facts. While some would applaud her move, and while indeed the same result might have occurred after a thorough impartial investigation, this all flies in the face of institutional economy and campus governance, denying the authority of our duly-elected faculty leaders, and denying the authority of you as our Board of Trustees. The four faculty representatives on the search committee were all dedicated professionals who are well aware of the needs of our college and us students, and surely must have served fairly and with distinction. This action of the chancellor seems to be in front of these colleagues, an attack on their role in shared governance. I'm not sure, I think a lot of us here are confused by the votes that just took place here, but the message I seem to be getting is that the Board of Trustees is deadlocked since it requires six positive votes. So, I don't know if you want to correct me or not, but my impression is that you are not offering an official response to the chancellor coming from the board itself. Though Mr. Canaccio said, uh, the search committee will do that.
And several trustees.
And several trustees. You are now ordering a suspension of the search process, and it is not clear to me at all whether you are continuing the investigation originally requested by the chancellor. I originally wrote this, and I sent an email to you with this, under the assumption that I can believe it was a news day that things were suspended, but evidently that's not the case. But yet I am concerned, because I don't know when they will be meeting again, and while I will be here again, um, that it's possible that a new presidential search must occur. If that is the case, I would like to offer advice to you, which also is contained in my email. One item is the formation of any new search committee that would have to be formed ought to follow past practice by including representation from ALANA, from the Women's Faculty Association, and from the College Alumni Association, in addition to its representation from all five of the official faculty and staff governance bodies, from the Student Government Association, from the administration, from the trustees, from the county sponsor, and from the community, so that we are well within the SUNY guidelines. Second point is that the search committee, if it has to be reappointed, should be done as soon as practical. But the search process would have to begin early in the fall semester, so that we have a broader field of candidates. One particular flaw that bothered me was the time it took for the search to be undergone this year. It didn't really start, um, moving until February, which greatly narrowed the choice of candidates. Although there are many things to admire in our acting president, he will have to be treated as a competitor in this election of a permanent president. I've always been in favor of never allowing an interim administrative officer to be eligible for the permanent position, because this creates an uneven balance in the search process. The search committee members, and indeed the college community, can tend to feel that by not choosing the interim officer for the permanent position, that they're actually firing that person. However, that's beyond the point, because you and our chancellor have determined otherwise that the interim person can be a candidate. So I wish Dr. Saunders luck, and if there is to be a new search, I caution the new search committee to continue to treat him and all the other applicants the same way. When all of my previous search committee experiences involve a scripted series of questions, members have been free to ask follow-up questions, and indeed to ask how the candidate has performed in previous jobs, and how he or she will perform as president of NCC. I urge the new search committee to continue to operate in this manner. I'm well aware of the need for confidentiality, especially in the early stages of the search. At many institutions, the governing body will unfairly fire any officer who dares to apply elsewhere for a better position. Yet when the search committee has conducted its interviews and narrowed its choices down to a few, this is advice I'm giving you, the committee members must be allowed to question references and other individuals with knowledge of the candidate. And this should be done prior to the public announcement of the names. This was not done when I served on the presidential search committee four years ago, and I have no way of knowing, but I suspect it may not have been done in the current process. The consequences in both cases created problems. Just on the record, I definitely support the use of a presidential search firm, giving you more advice. The better presidential, not necessarily the one that was used now, if there's a new search, they're not necessarily the one that was used four years ago either. But the better presidential candidates do not generally respond to advertisements, although we must certainly go that route as well. My word of caution, however, is to use the search firm as a tool. Do not become beholden to the search firm representative, lest the committee itself lose control of the process. I'm basing it more on my own experience, I don't know what happened with this committee. But I offer this advice as a way of bringing us all together. Thank you.
Mark Mazurath.
Good evening. I deliver these remarks with a heavy heart, uh, but I must dare to call it as I see it. I'll, uh, cut to the chase here. Among other things, I speak as a longtime volunteer in a maximum-security prison, where most of the men are black. I know firsthand the depth of the racial crisis they're living out. Michelle Alexander calls it the new Jim Crow. Racism in blatant and subtle forms is alive and well in this country. This plight must be faced publicly, and equally importantly, in the precinct of one's own heart. Was the presidential search committee racist? Two days of investigation by the Board of Trustees led to the conclusion that there was no evidence of bias. Why did the chancellor step in to suspend this investigation? Was her decision based on a wide, careful, and unbiased inquiry into the matter? I believe it wasn't, and I believe the arrogance of power her action reflects must be challenged. Now, for the elephant in the room. The crisis of the present search is directly connected to Dr. Saunders' bid to be president for NCC. With all due respect, uh, Dr. Saunders, I say if you were not in the running, I doubt we'd be facing the present impasse. I notice that John Sandayana is being quoted right and left these days. Those who cannot remember the past are doomed to repeat it. So let us remember that the faculty rose up in defense of the college to oppose and depose Dr. Asprey. Let us remember that during that struggle, Dr. Saunders, you showed no sign that you were anything but a staunch supporter and defender of Dr. Asprey. Let me remind you, my colleagues, one last time, that if we cannot remember what we fought for in the last two years, we will be condemned to have more of the very same that we rejected in our former president.
Thirty seconds.
Let us, for heaven's sake and the best interests of our college, remember the past, the very recent past, as we search for a leader worthy of taking us into the future. Thank you.
Evelyn Flutie.
Uh, she, she passed.
So you're just referring to her three minutes, though, right? Come on, folks, we can use a little love. Victor Abramah.
Good evening, sir. I'm speaking on behalf of the academic chairs. We have a statement to make to you. I am on the executive board of the academic chairs committee. I'm a chair, oh, yes, I'm the chair of the theater and dance program here at the college.
I apologize for that.
No, that's fine. Should the search for president of NASA Community College be reopened? The academic chairs strongly urge this board to follow the SUNY guidelines for presidential searches, which state, in the State University of New York guidelines for presidential searches for community colleges under the heading interim leadership, and I quote, "Experience has shown that the pressure on trustees and search committee members, real or imagined, can cloud an open search when there is an internal candidate who is at the same time chief executive. Therefore, we recommend that temporary or interim appointees not be candidates for the permanent position," end quote. In keeping with these guidelines, the chairs committee recommends that, that if Dr. Saunders is to remain acting president, he must be removed from consideration for future searches. Or should he wish to remain a candidate for president of this college, a new and temporary interim president should be appointed until the presidential search is completed. This will give the college and all of its constituents the necessary time to heal. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Passing one, two, three. I just want you to know that the search committee, yes, sir, thank you, did take that position, and I took the position that the Board of Trustees would want him interviewed, and I overruled them. And, uh, whether I was right or wrong about that, but that's how that happened. The search committee did make a very, very large point about that, and I took a lot of flak about it, but I just felt that, um, it was a snitch of the board, and I also felt that by reasoning, having been here for seven or eight months, and he's been at the college for twelve, twelve years, that he wasn't, he should be entitled to be considered. So I just want you to know that. It wasn't a fault of the search committee.
I'm just asking that if there is an open, certain, the search is opened again, that this be seriously considered, so we can avoid the divisiveness that we are now experiencing. Thank you.
Dave Stern.
Okay, Dave Stern from, uh, Physical Sciences Department. Um, I want to first thank all the board members for taking the time out of your busy schedules to serve the college. When you were appointed as trustee, you inherited the legacy of NCC being the best community college in the country, and it's your responsibility to ensure this legacy remains intact. I also want to express my thanks to the service of former prime, uh, former Chair Prime, and welcome, uh, Dr. Gordon as the chair.
Acting chair.
Oh, acting chair. Oh, I didn't realize that. Yeah.
I am the vice chair, just acting capacity.
Okay.
Are you a candidate? Sorry, Dr. You don't have enough exits here.
I came to speak to the board about the presidential search. Unfortunately, the SUNY chancellor has decided to disregard procedures and act on Newsday's editorial directions. Since she has decided to dictate the search, uh, then personally, I think SUNY should pay the bill for a new consultant, not NASA campaign taxpayers or NCC students. Um, I asked the board to make this request of funding from SUNY, since they're new for search. Now, the problem here is that we need to follow the rule of law. The search process followed the SUNY and NCC policies and procedures. If we're not happy with the results, we need to stop blaming the search committee, and instead reform the policies and procedures. Professor Emeritus Mike Stoyer laid out his plan in a statement before me. I would only add that the new search committee have a majority of representatives that know NASA Community College. The previous committee seemed to be, uh, stuffed with more political appointees than educators. Last, I asked each board member to ask your patrons, the governor Como, or county executive Manguano, to quickly fill the vacant VOT seats with candidates that have some knowledge of higher education. And last, is Logan still here? I just wanted to let Logan know that, uh, that I want you to know, the majority of faculty here do not condone any kind of intimidation of students, all right? I just want to let you know. I don't know who did that, but that doesn't hurt the faculty. Thank you.
Phyllis Carwin.
Um, before I speak, you know, at the beginning of the meeting, in the back, we couldn't hear, I couldn't hear at all. Could you tell us what votes you took, what they were on, and what the votes were, first? we couldn't hear, I couldn't hear at all. Could you tell us what votes you took, what they were on, and what the votes were first?
The first was a motion to consider a resolution authorizing the response to the Chancellor's letters by email dated May 7, 2013, and May 14, 2013. Trustee Amin seconded the motion. The board voted eight to zero to approve that. John DeGrace read that the next resolution was "Be it resolved" that the Board of Trustees respond to the Chancellor's emails from May 7, 2013, and May 14, 2013 concerning the Presidential Search Committee. This was, the motion was done by John DeGrace. It was seconded by Mr. Drucker. There were five votes for this, there were three votes against it. There was a second motion to consider a resolution suspending the presidential search as pursuant to the email communication of the Chancellor of the SUNY System dated May 14, 2013. Trustee John Donnelly seconded the motion. All eight members of the board voted to look at that resolution, not against. Mr. Donnelly read "Be it resolved" that the Board of Trustees suspend the presidential search pursuant to the email communication of the Chancellor of the SUNY System dated May 14, 2013. Mr. Donnelly made the motion. It was seconded by Trustee Mary Adams. There were three votes for that, there were five votes against it.
Thank you. And now can you tell us, has the board decided in its executive session on any further action?
I have been authorized by the board to respond that the board, this question was added in pass.
Okay. Thank you. Let me just say to you and to all of my colleagues here that this college is in a terrible crisis. I wonder, with our enrollment dropping the way it has been, if there's a relationship between the articles in Newsday and a drop in our enrollment. I bet some of the mathematicians can calculate that in a few months, and I bet we'll find our relationship. I want to urge everyone to think before we speak, to think before we write a private email or a public email to each other, to remember that an email sent in private will undoubtedly be public, and that words said in public, charged words, emotional words, hurtful words, can be taken back and are slowly destructive and corrosive. And that's what is happening here at our college for the last two weeks. We are destroying each other, and we need to stop this discourse. We need to treat each other civilly. We need to stop ripping each other apart in public and try to speak to each other factually and civilly. Thank you.
I very much agree with your comments. I think that we are family. We have to treat each other as such. We have to treat each other with respect and collegiality. We may not always agree on all the same issues and items, but we can agree or disagree in an agreeable fashion. I hope to raise a new spirit to be able to move forward in the resolution of these issues that are facing Nassau. Thank you.
Steve Richmond? I said Steve Richmond. Are you?
Tonight I am Steve Richmond.
Okay.
I'm a professor of psychology here at Nassau.
And a magician also.
Excuse me, Sheryl Cohen. You're scheduled to speak tonight too. May I have your free minutes?
Yes, you can.
No.
That's why.
All right, we will go. Steve Richmond is passing his minstern. And Mr. Cohen is...
It's good because I didn't want to race through this. A number of people have spoken, or will speak, supporting the integrity of the presidential search process. I too believe that the attack on that process is an attack on the integrity of the good people who served on the search committee. However, I want to speak about a related matter. The email that Trustee Cornaccio sent to his fellow trustees following the March Board meeting seems still to be a subject of discussion on all NCC, and is, I believe, the spark that ignited the accusations leveled at the search committee. A number of people are angered at the content of Trustee Cornaccio's email. They claim his statements were racist and sexist. I believe that it takes quite a stretch beyond the words of that email to conjure either racism or sexism. In the email, Trustee Cornaccio seems to be communicating to his colleagues on the board his concern for Alana's complaints and his attempts to deal with them following the meeting. In doing so, he refers to a number of people who spoke at the meeting and provides physical descriptions. This was almost certainly done for the sake of the recently appointed trustees, who would not recognize the speakers by name alone. Describing someone as the youngest-looking and very pretty, followed by a string of compliments, was almost certainly meant to be descriptive and not demeaning. I see no sexism there. In one case, Mr. Cornaccio referred to someone as a thug. This is a harsh judgment. In my perception, however, this person had in fact been rude and unprofessional toward Mr. Cornaccio at the board meeting. I don't know if that was the cause of the harsh characterization. Regardless of the reason for the use of the word or the validity of the evaluation, I don't think "thug" can be seen as a racially loaded word. I often tell my students in general psychology that Freud could have taken any dream and interpreted it to have a sexual meaning. If you're looking for something, you're likely to see it. I believe that those people who came to the March Trustees' Meeting already believed Mr. Cornaccio to be motivated by racism. Some of them distorted his words to conform to their perception. I am outraged that Mr. Cornaccio has been accused of racism. I am outraged that an email meant for his colleagues was made public. I am outraged that this trumped-up charge has served as the impetus for implying racial motivation on behalf of the search committee and demeaning the integrity of all of its members. I am outraged that Chancellor Zephyr's rushed to judgment, almost certainly in response to political pressure and without waiting for the result of an investigation that she herself requested. I am outraged that Dr. Saunders claims that he was treated differently than other candidates. How could he possibly know this? Mostly, I am outraged and deeply saddened that some people on this campus are more concerned with their own personal agendas than with the welfare of Nassau Community College and our students. I want to offer my personal thanks to, I'm sorry, to Trustee Cornaccio for his unwavering professionalism and courage in the face of provocation and for his substantial contributions to Nassau Community College. And I would like to add, as Sheryl Cohen, I agree totally with this.
Catherine Kelly?
Glad to finally stand up, my knees are rushing up. I'm Catherine Kelly from the Biology Department. I'm a full professor there. Although I was not at the May 7 of the Board of Trustees' Meeting, I was told to hear about events that transpired there on many levels. In my 25 years as a member of the faculty, I've seen the college weather many tough times, but I've never seen nor heard of things as disturbing as the events of last week's meeting. It is my understanding that a number of people who seem not to have been concerned about events at the college until they were inflamed to believe that a civil injustice was being done, came and hijacked the legitimate agenda of Tuesday's meeting. It is my understanding that faculty members who have long been engaged in courteous and professional deliberation about policies and procedures of college were hobbled into surrendering their speaking time. It is alarming that the Presidential Search Committee and the process that they engaged in to select three qualified candidates are being impugned. People who sacrificed their time and offered hard, honest work to find to find a new president should be praised, not vilified by people who have little understanding of the intense and thoughtful work of the members of the committee. From my knowledge of the public statements about the conduct of the search, I see no evidence of irregularities that should invalidate it. I have served on several search committees for teaching and professional faculty in the Biology Department. Currently, I am a member of the Search Committee for the new Math and Science Area Dean. It has been the custom of all of those search committees to require that members be present for all candidate interviews to be able to deliberate and vote on the recommendations for hiring. Every search committee I've ever been on had one person asked the same question of every single interviewed candidate. And that was the decision that the Math Science Committee made yesterday to be assigned, who would ask which question of the candidates that were invited for interviews. If a member of any search committee I was on could not make the commitment to do those things, then they relinquished their seat on the committee. Even with several members recused from the final decision in the presidential search, this committee's work still represents the culmination of many errors of thoughtful effort by a large and diverse group of people. It is my understanding that an investigation of the search committee's process by trustees who were not on the committee yielded satisfaction with what was done to produce the recommended list of candidates. Times of transition are always challenging, but adding the injustice of judgment without knowledge of all the facts to call for dismissal of the search committee's work adds unfairly to the challenges we face. The remaining members of the Board of Trustees must act in a resolute, fair, and timely fashion to restore stability to our campus by affirming the legitimacy of the search process and taking steps to reach a decision to appoint one of the three selected candidates. The board also needs to stand strongly against the intrusive actions of the SUNY Chancellor.
I apologize in advance if I mispronounced the name. Christine Tuyong?
That's okay. Nobody can pronounce my name.
Please pronounce it for me, sir.
Tuyong.
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 Yes. I'm a member of the Biology Department, and one of the things, I find it very sad to find the campus so divided now. I mean, I've seen businesses left in my own department, but I've never seen the campus being so divided, and I've been here 23 years, so that's several times. I have a question for the three board members who decided to suspend the search. Why didn't you wait for the full inquiry? I mean, why did you listen to the Chancellor? It seems to me you don't have to. And then the other thing I have is I have a comment about the summer enrollment. Summer enrollment is lower this year. So somebody mentioned that maybe it's because of the bad press we're getting. Maybe it's because we have, you know, a bad economy. Maybe because the registration started later than usual. I don't know which one of these is sensitive, and that's it.
Frank Prusenda?
Hi, Frank Prusenda, we're Nassau Community College Federation, teaches Vice President. Okay, I don't have a prepared statement. I was just jotting down notes. You know, as we discuss evidence in order to make rational decisions, even more substantiated charges continue to be made tonight. I hear comments of how the next search must be honest, open, as though this search has not been. This search has been hijacked. I support the Chair's resolution. The well has already been poisoned. The confidence in our leadership has been severely compromised. The indecision and lack of support in this board's non-resolutions is troublesome. In a spirit of openness and transparency, I'd like to know why three members of this Board of Trustees voted not to engage the Chancellor. But on another note, I asked you, the last Board of Trustees, and I implored you that in this chaos that we're in, without any leadership, that we have any faith in on this campus, how you could possibly continue searching for area deans and putting us all through this incredible process, okay? I don't know how anybody would want to come here. I don't know why we should have these area deans hired when we have no idea who the next president is. We don't have confidence in the leadership that we have now. But having said that, I have every confidence that once we begin negotiations next week, everything's going to get a lot better.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Richard Newman. I'm a professor in the English Department. On April 29, I sent an email to the faculty calling out the racist and sexist language that Trustee Cornaccio had in this email, and urging my colleagues to appear before this board so that you would know how we felt. I did so because once Trustee Cornaccio's words became a matter of public record, regardless of whether they represented his true feelings or not, and regardless of whether he intended them to remain private, I think that both he and the Board of Trustees became accountable to the public for those words. It saddens me that, as far as I know, neither Trustee Cornaccio nor this board has adequately accepted that accountability, a fact which has helped to fuel the controversy surrounding our search for a new president. When I wrote my email, the issue on the table was whether Alana should have been given a seat on the Presidential Search Committee. A fair reading of the statements made by Alana's president and this and more before this board on March 19 and April 11 revealed that one of Alana's primary motives in requesting that seat was to start a conversation about race and racism on campus. Any reasonable reading of what has happened since then reveals just how important that conversation is for us to have. In saying this, I am not taking a position on the new search the Chancellor's infer has called for, though her decision not to wait for the results of the investigation she herself ordered should concern us all. Rather, I am calling on us not to allow how we move forward to be defined at one end by the relative and inherently dismissive silence with which this campus has responded to Alana's concerns, and on the other, the polarizing rhetoric that was on display at the May 7 Board of Trustees' Meeting. The kind of ongoing conversation I am talking about requires an institutional commitment, one that, within the context of shared governance, would flow from the top down as well as from the bottom up. In my experience, which I am happy to share with anyone, such a conversation can be healing, difficult and painful though it may be. For it to work, however, the leadership in particular of the Board of Trustees and the Office of the President is necessary. I urge you to show that leadership now. Thank you.
We thought it should be enough people from the board to give an idea as to what we were looking for in a president, enough people from the county and legislative body, enough people from the major campus organizations. Thereafter, before the appointments went out, we went back to the whole board, and the whole board says, yes, definitely do that. On the day of the email you referred to, the board met, all right? And decided not to increase again, because we knew a request was coming from Alana, to increase the membership. After they spoke in that meeting, I tried to come up with a way, because I was, somehow or another, I felt like a family. And that's a bad word to say, I guess. But in any event, I said, you know, is there a way to do this? But in any event, I said, you know what, is there a way to do this where we talk, and we talk, and we talk? And I tried to come up with something where the major faculty organizations under collegiality shared governments would be like a representative for the other groups on campus, and under these shared governments, they would funnel their requests or views to them. Okay. So, and I was very happy about that. That email was sent out around midnight on a Friday night, because whenever I have an idea like this, I don't proceed, despite what I may people do think, on my own. I shared with the other members of the Board, I think I found a way within our procedures to make them happy. And I made some comment about people. It was not intended to be racist, but I made some expressions that I thought were suitable in private, and if it's not today's language, I understand, you know, there's certain things you can't say, you can't call people sweetheart or honey, even though it's considerable, and mama and papa, apparently, that's an evil, I thought they were the wrongest words in the society, but I wasn't born in that age, okay? And there was no evil intent on my part. So, that's the reason. I did not appoint the members of the Search Committee. You see one story and another in a major organ in this county, saying I appointed the members of the Search Committee. I did not.
My comment was not about whether or not Alana should have been given a seat on the Search Committee. I'm not taking a position on that. I'm not taking a position on that. And I do understand that, you know, people write emails, and sometimes language gets out of control, where you say things that you don't necessarily understand what that would mean if it's heard publicly. I understand that. I mean, in fact, in my email, I was very clear to say, I was talking about the language. I'm not accusing you of racism.
I understand.
But I do believe that once the language was public, there's a certain amount of accountability.
I just want you to know, the word thug I've used to present age me up to this time.
You don't have to.
You don't pay for the village file on answering. And it's common expression.
Trustee Cornaccio, you don't have to explain that. I'm not accusing you personally of anything.
It's very difficult for the project or something when there is no malice at all in my heart and my soul. I just want you to know. I gave a written explanation explaining.
Okay. Nonetheless, I think, I don't want that to become the focus of the conversation. My point is, I think we need to have a conversation about race on campus.
You may direct it.
That, I think, is the point that I would like to make.
Any other comments from the Board? Philip Nicholson.
Dr. Saunders, members of the Board of Trustees. It was really my intention to pass, in the interest of Tom, and maybe I still want that to happen, adding much, okay, I'm sorry. It was my intention.
No, no, we can't, please.
Well, I actually sent you a letter because I thought I would save time, and if you have a hard copy of that letter, I would read it tonight if someone would allow me the additional three minutes. So, because an item in that letter may have been represented earlier in this meeting, and that's why I came up. I don't have the hard copy myself, but I would be happy to read it to this audience if someone happens to have a legible copy. I mailed it as well to Chancellor Zimfer and to Chairman of the Board of Trustees of the State University of New York, Alvin McCall. The letter expresses a serious concern about the slanderous attacks on people that I have known for many years as honorable and representative of the large majority of this faculty. Who should this search be terminated because of the allegations of its unfairness will be slandered for the remainder of their lives and careers, including one of the members of this Board? And I outlined my concerns about that and that action in my letter of a couple of days ago. Do you have a copy?
I have one team copy.
Yeah.
The Board of Trustees, three-page letter.
It is a three-page letter, which I wrote, and it would take little time. So, is there someone who has three minutes?
Frank.
All right. Let's see. I'll stop it, but maybe it'll be so tedious and so unimportant to most of you that you'll stop me and I'll sit down. This is to members of the Board of Trustees. I'm writing to you this way, electronically, since so much of our communication passes in this format, but I will send hard copies to your recent communicants, Chancellor Nancy Zimfer, SUNY trustee chairman, H. Carl McCall, since both of them have become involved in the recent events at Nassau Community College Search Committee for a new college president. First, I don't know that that pertains to everyone here, for those of you who may know very little about me, and be uncertain about my connection to these events or my history at Nassau Community College, let me give you a brief introduction. This is my 46th year as a member of the Department of History, Political Science, and Geography. I've served as chairperson of that department for the last eight years. Prior to that, I was an officer of the Nassau Community College Federation Teachers, the NCCFT, vice president for 11 years, president, and chief negotiator for the 12 years after that, from 1976 to 99. I was promoted to the rank of State University of New York Distinguished Professor in 2005, a position held by only four other NCC faculty. During all of those years, I attended hundreds of meetings, organized and participated in dozens of activities, actions, demonstrations, engaged in protests, rallied at Board meetings, government hearings and meetings, served on numerous search committees, and enjoyed a remarkable and satisfying professional career. I was never frightened at a public meeting, never intimidated when I came forward to speak, and never fearful for other speakers at a public meeting of the Board of Trustees of Nassau County or the Nassau County Board of Supervisors or after 1996, the Nassau County Legislature, never. That was until last Tuesday evening, May 7, 2013. A carefully organized and orchestrated protest to the outcome of the NCC trustee search committee for a new college president brought about 300 woefully ill-informed community members to a public board meeting. Their posters and speakers made allegations about trustees and members of the search committee that could only have come from a small, select number of people unhappy with the outcome of the search. One of those allegations revealed a breach in confidentiality afforded to students under law, other charges, took a stretch of the imagination to conclude bias or prejudicial feelings taken from private correspondence. Unfortunately, the anger of this large gathering led to frequent verbal assaults on some speakers, interruption of others, intimidating threats, and the waiving of the rules of the three-minute oath, which I don't, they waived for me tonight, if someone gives out about one more minute of their lesson. So, but that was all right, because they were on the side of this McCarthyite assault on the search committee's fairness. Among the several scheduled speakers who declined to speak when their names were called, I am sure that at least a few did so because of fear. At certain times, the threatening crowd's comments were actually applauded from the dais by the Chairman of the Board of Trustees, Mr. Jeffrey Prun, and the Vice Chair, Dr. Jorge Vard, along with the discontented applicant for the college presidency, Dr. Kenneth Saunders. All of this was video recorded, so you do not have to take my disturbing comments on at face value. Watch the video and make up your own mind if you weren't there in person. One speaker from the faculty left early. I truly believe that he felt his safety was endangered. Another was nearly shouted down. Clearly, the meeting was poorly controlled by the chairman, or was it deliberate? The Search Committee, can I have three minutes from somebody else?
Craig. You already have Craig's three minutes.
Thank you very much. The Search Committee, now your time is up now.
May I yield two minutes of my time? Would that be adequate?
No, not quite.
I will yield three minutes of my time.
That'll be all right. I'm not that far from that, but it's a part that I think bears on these earlier conversations coming up. The Search Committee was made of a diverse and representative collection of people, none of whom, none of whom, could be said to be easily influenced or made biased by any one or another member. I know three of these elected faculty representatives so well as to be absolutely assured of their fairness and objectivity in everything they do with the college. Our union president, Professor Deborah DeSantis, administers a contract that originally had the most comprehensive anti-discriminatory clause in the nation, one that dates back to the early 1970s. I know about that because I helped to write it, fought for it, and still am proud of our faculty union for holding fast to it. I know that our academic senate chairperson, Dr. Kimberly Reiser, is one of the most respected members of our academic community, is well-known in the Faculty Council of Community Colleges of SUNY, is a leader in all aspects of democratic governance, and is nobody's fool when it comes to discretion and fairness in everything she does. The chairperson of our chairs committee, Professor Lynn Mizola, is strong, independent, tough, and smart. She serves all 30 department chairs as their leader because they trust their fairness and even handedness, even when there are big disagreements. Not one of these women should be worried as their work was on May 7, as biased or unfair. Only those with distorted smears as their guise could believe otherwise, as this crowd so amply demonstrated. See the video. The chief critic of the work of the committee from within Nassau Community College were the outgoing president of the Student Government Association, who mentioned this letter, I think, and several members of the faculty group alone, including his president. The student's complaint was that the interview schedule forced her to go out of the city, something that was announced as a possibility to all members of the Search Committee at the outset. The student is the recipient of the valedictorian award for the forthcoming commencement and of a laudatory Saunders-authored letter on her behalf, she told me this, to a future university transfer. None of these critics, Alana or the student, should be regarded as objective in this situation. All have something specific to gain or lose from their advocacy.
Time.
So, they should be discounted accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholson.
Okay. Well, you have the letter. It's just one short little time.
You've got 12 minutes.
Thank you.
Oh, sure. I'll return it. Robert Guardino.
He gave me his time before.
I just want to make a couple of comments. Number one, I do want to take a moment to just thank Jeffrey Prun for his service to the college in his capacity as chair and his capacity as trustee. I appreciate the position that he's in as chair, and I ask that we move forward together as I am in this position. I am acting chair with the spirit that we want Nass Community College to really represent what we are. We are a community that is so important to our mission. Our mission is really to take care of the 24,000 students. We have a fabulous faculty, very well-educated, very well-represented. When I went before the legislators several weeks ago, I was unanimously appointed back to the legislature to the college as a trustee, and in my comments, I pointed out what a generous institution it is for the community of Nassau. My wife was graduated from here in the nursing program, so I have a very soft spot as a physician in all the different areas that you guys do. I have friends of my son who attend here, who tell me what a great experience it is. We need to work together. Please, I'm for you. We need to work together to resolve the issues that we have facing us and to be able to move forward so that we can come up with a good process to establish the next president, whoever that is, will be determined by however the process turns out, but that process will be set up by the Presidential Search Committee. I can't answer to you today whether it is in the existing Search Committee that is allowed to proceed forward with its results, or a new Presidential Search Committee. We will look at the Chancellor's guidance in this regard, and I look forward to working together with you to fulfill the mission that we all strive to complete.
Dr. Vard, if I could make a comment? I just, I wasn't ready, but I just want to say, I want to thank the community, college, faculty, and students, and I want to thank each member of the Board for the great experience they have given me and the knowledge and the expertise. I also want to acknowledge and thank our great Student Government Association. I know we have a couple of members here, and I also want exclusively to thank Logan Kenny for the opportunity that she has personally given me. And I just want to thank everybody for the great job, and this with my last meeting. Once again, Dr. Ken, you know, good luck and everything, and leading this institution as it was to be, and all the Board of Trustees, the faculties, thank you so much, and wish you all well. Thank you.
On behalf of the Board of Trustees, we thank you for your service, and I believe your tenure ends at the end of May.
Yep.
Okay, well, don't be surprised if we call back here on the evening. Don't say you could buy it yet. Any other commentary from any of the other members of the Board?
I thank all the speakers that came this evening to speak, and Professor Nicholson had mentioned that some may not have spoken at the previous meeting because they were intimidated. So, I would ask those members of the media, particularly Newsday, to take into consideration what was said tonight, because some of the reporting in the largest organ, the largest newspaper on Long Island, has been based on innuendo, not getting the facts from other people, and tarnishing this college. So, I would ask Newsday to take into consideration what they heard tonight, because the editorial today was factually incorrect, it was excessively overreaching in its words, and I, for one, am appalled by it, to say that there is this stinking mess made by the trustees. What stinking mess are you talking about? So, I would say to Newsday, you better give this college a fair shake for the constituents on this campus, the number-one constituent, which is the students. Thank you.
May I make a suggestion that we work very diligently to communicate within the college as opposed to outside of the college, and that all of us start doing that?
Absolutely. As I said, Nass Community College is first and foremost a community. We have to treat each other with respect, professionalism, and integrity. I think you all have that. I plan to show you mine.
I think we missed Jason Gorman.
Well, Jason Gorman, see that his three minutes too.
I had two.
Craig had given his three minutes, and it was transferred over to another speaker.
It was transferred to me.
It was originally, but then, Jason, your three minutes were used for Mr. Nicholson. Yes, you did. Craig Capriop gave those three minutes also to Professor Nicholson.
He used up six.
He used up 12. All right. The next one is.
Can I say one thing? I'm just going to say that I gave up three minutes. I didn't understand. I can do mine in three minutes.
Well, I can do the next meeting.
I said Craig.
Yes, I know, but your three had already been given. Craig has previously.
I yielded three minutes.
Yes, I know. Craig had given the three minutes originally to.
Can I just be recognized? Evelyn Deludi, who I mistakenly said had passed, and you made your joke, she said that her, she asked me if I could really give her time to anyone, and I really. that her, she asked me if I could really give her time to anyone, and I really, I mean, really, Jason has been here at every meeting. He's asking where your.
Is there any objection to listen to this?
No, I actually would like to listen to what you have to say.
Jason, go ahead. Go ahead.
Some say that the search process has been corrupted. If this is true, then there is one fundamental clause. It is warranted in SUNY guidelines for presidential searches for community colleges that I will now read again. Experience has shown that the pressures on trustees and search committee members, real or imagined, can cloud an open search when there is an internal candidate who is at the same time chief executive. Therefore, we recommend that temporary or interim appointees not be candidates for the permanent position. While some may seek to try to deny or distort that wisdom, everyone knows and understands the spirit and purpose of that warning. It indicates the danger is slanted in the benefit of the chief executive. So, if we are to begin the hard work of a new search once again, the blame lies not with the entire Presidential Search Committee, whom everyone agrees are highly respected members of our college. The blame lies with those who failed to speak out at the moment of the injustices that they claim to now have seen, or those that simply walked away. The test of disempion is simple. Who among us who now cry foul would raise the question of the integrity of the Presidential Search Committee if Dr. Saunders were victorious? If there is to be a new search, then it must be recognized that Dr. Saunders should not have been allowed to hold office of the president, however the title is called. That is what has tainted this search process, and will take the next one if we foolishly do not follow the guidance once again. Dr. Saunders had given every fair chance and more proving himself. However, he did not rise to the top. Now, he must choose to leave this institution and let another more capable than he take up the helm later, or let go of his role and prove himself the better candidate if a new search ensues this term well. Only when those who took advantage of inappropriate opportunity are recognized and the Presidential Search Committee is vindicated, can we hope for a true reconciliation of the members of the college community and move forward. The chancellor's latest directives must be challenged, or it will be the beginning of the end of our college's autonomy, shared governance, and the inevitable vulnerability of the faculty to those in power. When the chancellor agrees that the Presidential Search Committee is racist, she condemns us all. Thank you very much.
The next final panel committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 18, 2013, at 5:00 p.m., followed by the whole board meeting. The board will open the public session at 6:30 p.m. and resume the public session by 8:00 p.m. I request your motion to adjourn the meeting. Do you have a motion?